Matt, I'm watching for it to go wild, I'll let you know when it does.
Yep, I am too. Alright, I just got my notification, looks like we're up. So I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Jeffersonville City Council, it is Monday the 17th at 7:01. Mr. Ellis, would you read us an invocation?
Yes, would everyone please join me? Gracious God. We come once again, Lord, just asking for your guidance and your strength as we prepare and try to do the business of the city of Jeffersonville. Grant us patience, grant us understanding, and grant us the love of your people in that precious name of Jesus Christ, who is our Lord and our Savior. Let everyone say, "Amen."
Amen.
Alright, roll call please.
Counselperson White.
Present.
Counselperson Burns.
Present.
Counselperson Paris.
Here.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Here.
Counselperson Croft.
Here.
Counselperson Webb.
Present.
Counsel President Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Hawkins. Counselperson Ellis.
Here.
Let the record reflect that we do have eight council members via phone and President Owen is in the council chair or in the mayor's conference room and all are present.
Thank you very much, we have minutes to approve from the regular proceedings of August the 3rd, 2020.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maple, second Mr. Burns, Ms. Gill.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Minutes from the special council meeting, proceedings of August the 10th, 2020.
Motion, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maple, second Mr. Burns, Ms. Gill.
Counselperson White. Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Okay, we have approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for moving number 10.
Second.
The motion to approve the agenda with removing number 10, which is going back to the planning commission, their next meeting, second by Mr. Paris.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Alright, we have claims to be approved, the city in the amount of $551,776.13. Anything else Heather?
No, that's all correct, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Webb and a second by Mr. Ellis to approve the civil city claims as presented.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Right, and then we have parks claims in the amount of $108,184.54, and I believe Heather had a reduction for this one.
Yes, on page three, the claim for Aztec flooring out of the Nahann Fieldhouse, the greater Clark County Schools is going to pay for half of that flooring. So it reduces that claim to $18,555, which is a reduction of $17,755. And that brings the new total to $90,429.54.
$90,429.54.
Yes, that's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burns and a second by Mr. Maples, Ms. Gill.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Thank you all.
Alright, report of the clerk, Ms. Gill.
I have none tonight, thank you.
Thank you, we'll go straight to unfinished business, which is 2020 OR 36, an ordinance amending 2019 OR 57. And an ordinance fixing the salaries of the appointed officers and employees for all departments of the city of Jeffersonville. This passed on the first reading at our August 3rd meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to amend 2020 OR 36, changing the public safety and chief of police administrative support to a pay grade four.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for an amendment, motion by Mr. Maple, second by, is that Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Okay, anything further? Ms. Gill.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counselperson Ma- or Counsel Vice President Maples, I'm sorry.
Alright, aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counselperson Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero, that was to amend.
Make a motion to approve 2020 OR, was it 36, on the, on the second and third.
Would you mind holding up on that for one second, so I can make a motion about the liaison position?
Yes, I will send my motion.
Okay, I'd like to move that pay range for the police liaison position be between 45 and 50,000. Based upon justification, written justification presented by the police chief to council president. Second.
So your motion, Mr. White, then, is to allow the administration to offer beyond the 35% in the range that you specified? With written justification submitted by the administration?
Yes, to, to, to you, council president.
And that's per the salary administration policy?
Yes.
That's the process you're referencing?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. White and a second from Mr. Webb.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Counsel President, no, okay, thank you. Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Eight to one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2020 OR 36 on the second and third.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Maples and a second by Mr. Ellis, anything further? Ms. Gill.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Alright, we've removed number 10, brings us to number 11, which is 2020 OR 39, an ordinance of transfer within the same department. This passed on the first and second on August the 3rd, Heather, have there been any changes?
No, there's no changes.
Motion approved on the, on the third and final.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples and a second by Mr. Burns, Ms. Gill.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis. Nine zero.
Alright, new business, Ms. Metcalf, this will be OR, I'm sorry, 2020 OR 40, I believe, this is an ordinance of transfer within the same department.
Yes, we have multiple departments wanting to transfer from capital lines to supply lines, which is the fire department, police department, and planning and zoning. And then the very last one is for the building commissioner to get a new computer, his computer just crashed this week. And it looks like I forgot the parentheses, so we're taking it from repair and maintenance, that should be a negative to positive software and hardware, so I'll fix that on your next reading.
Okay.
Heather, just for clar- yeah, just for clarification, I emailed you, the other supplies, did you say that has to be expenditures under a thousand dollars?
Yes, each item in a supply account would need to be under a thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. I'm making motion to approve on the first and second, 2020 OR 40.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maple and a second by Mr. Croft, Ms. Gill.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Thank you.
Okay, the last we have on our agenda for new business, Mike Gillinwater, here from, on behalf of the sewer department. And he is going to explain guaranteed maximum price approach for the CSO interceptor project. And if, Mike, not everybody, everybody might not be familiar with this project or how this project has been approached, so maybe give us a little bit of background before you go into the specifics.
Sure will, and if I get too far down in the weeds, just pull me back, try not to. For several years, the city has been involved in completion of a consent decree with the EPA. Because, largely because our sanitary sewer system in the downtown area is combined with the stormwater system. What that means in simple terms is that the pipes that carry the sewage when you flush the toilet are the same ones that carry the water that falls onto the streets. They run into the same pipes and, and it goes to the sewage treatment plant. Back when Jeffersonville was first developed, that wasn't a problem, it all just ran into the river. But the Clean Water Act cured that for us, so we built a new plant. What the EPA wants us to do is to try and to separate those two systems. Because what happens is when we get a big rain like we had the other day, the, the pipes get filled up, the sewer plant can't take all of the water. And some of that sewage runs into the river. And even though by the time that happens, mostly it's just rainwater, there's still pollution that goes straight to the river. So we have a consent decree with the EPA, a consent decree is like a court order that we've all agreed to. And it requires us to put in some infrastructure, some pipes and, and other facilities that separates the stormwater and the sanitary sewage water. And this portion of the project is probably the biggest financial undertaking that the sewer department's ever had. It's, it's looking like about 23, 24 million dollars. It, it calls for putting in about 8,000 feet of pipe down city streets through downtown Jeffersonville. And they're big pipes, and it's complicated, they're deep pipes. This project, what makes it complicated are a couple of things, number one, the pipes are large and they have to be put into the ground approximately 25 foot deep. If you're familiar with downtown Jeffersonville and this area, you know that the water table is not that deep here. And so, in essence, what they're going to be doing is working below the water table, which means you have to go to extra trouble to keep pumping the water out of the ground in order to do your construction work. In addition, when you get into downtown Jeffersonville, the soil conditions vary considerably from place to place and from season to season. This project is expected to take approximately two years to complete, so the soil conditions and water conditions will vary because of the time of year and because of the place. One of the other things that makes it complicated is that we don't have a good understanding of exactly what's underground through the middle of the city of Jeffersonville. We know where some things are, but you're, we're going to run into things that are unexpected. It may be environmental problems, it may be a pipeline that we didn't know was there, it may be a different type of soil condition. So, long story short is, what we have here is probably one of the most complicated undertakings that we've ever had in the sewer department. Which creates a degree of risk, because according to our consent decree, we have time periods when we have to perform, and if we don't, then the, the consent decree calls for daily penalties. So the objective of the sewer board is to get this project done in time and on budget. And for those of you familiar with public works projects, I'll talk about one of the standard procurement methods. There are, there are five authorized procurement methods to get these public works projects done. The first and most familiar is the design, bid, and build, which means we hire an engineer to design the thing, we put it out for bid, and the lowest responsive and responsible bidder gets the job. The advantage of that is that there's competitive bidding and people try to get the job, so they lower, lower their bids to do that. One of the disadvantages to that is that when you do a job this way and it's bid, you can be assured of one thing, and that is that the bid price is the lowest possible thing that you're going to pay. And, and I cannot think of a single public works project where there was not a change order. A change order is something that comes up during the project and which requires a change of plans and usually a change in the price. And it always, unless it's something that comes out, which occasionally the owner, which is the city, will, will change their mind and say, we don't want that part of the project, take it off, and we don't have to pay for it. But generally, it's the contractor saying, well, wait a minute, the engineer told me the soil condition was going to be this way, and when I got there, it wasn't, it was worse. And I had to incur more expenses, I had to use extra rock, the pipe didn't work, I had to, to do this, and, and the, the price goes up. In every case that I'm aware of, it's usually accompanied with change orders. So think about it this way, with the design bid, build, then the, the price you get is the basement floor, it can only go one way, and that's up, and it usually does. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about this process because you're probably mostly familiar with it. If you have questions about it, I'll be glad to, to visit with you on that. But let's talk about the process that the sewer board has recommended, and that's called a guaranteed savings contract. It is also a competitive process, but instead of the only factor being the price, it, it can include other things like the quality and other, other terms. Now, don't get me wrong, when we send a contract out for design bid build, we can set the timeline when it has to be done, and we can put in penalties if it's not completed. But if they run into anything that's unexpected or doesn't work right, we're getting charged more. With the guaranteed savings contract, most of the work on these things, from my point of view, goes in to them on the front end. And let me explain how it works. We sent out a request for qualifications. In order to submit a proposal, the people who respond have to be certified by the state of Indiana. And I understand, I'm told that there are about 25 different companies in Indiana that have the certification, so they can submit these types of proposals. We run ads in the newspapers and inviting people to send in their qualifications. We did that, ran an ad twice, got about 10 inquiries on that, sent them the six-page instructions on how to submit their qualifications. And out of those 10 that we sent out, we received three responses. Those folks were interviewed by the sewer board, and a selection was made after talking to the three. Now, that leaves some discretion in the, in the hands of the sewer board. I will remind you that the sewer board is composed of three people, one is the mayor and two are appointees of the city council. One is a professional engineer, Bill Segas, and the other is ex-mayor Dale Orem, who was dealing with sewer problems in Jeffersonville 30 years ago, or longer, when the new sewer plant needed to be built. And, and these gentlemen, let me just take a moment to say that they take a lot of heat from people because they try to save money for you guys. They don't waive fines, they have never, to my knowledge, waived a fine when people didn't pay their sewer bills, and they take a lot of heat, even for charitable organizations, they don't do that. And they, I have to say that they are some of the most conscientious public servants I've ever seen. They read through the, every claim, every meeting, and I'm not saying that you folks don't, but they go through every time somebody wants to, an adjustment to their sewer bill or their water bill because of a broken pipe or, or this or that, I mean, and, and there's like eight pages, single space each time we have a meeting, they go through it. And they, these are conscientious men. Bill's been a ser- a professional engineer for many, many years, he's at the, you know, the, the tail end of his career. And these guys are very conscientious, now, I wasn't there when they did the, the interviews. There were three companies that submitted proposals and that were interviewed. One's a local company, two are larger companies that are not from in town. I will tell you that the attitude of our engineer that advises the sewer board, and the attitude of the sewer board is that when we do this project, there are a couple of things that we want, we want it to come in on time, and we want to try to make it come in on budget. With a, with this process, we can negotiate a lot of the terms of the contract. And think of it this way, when we come up with a price for these folks, that's the ceiling. It can only go one direction, it can come down, but it can't go up. And that helps, it also helps reduce the risk to the city. Because I don't know what they're going to find when they get under the streets of Jeffersonville, they're going to run up Chestnut Street and, and then, well, I, I can't tell you the whole path, but it's going to go 8,000 feet, but they're going to find things they don't expect. And the risk is on them. And if they run into something they don't expect, then, you know, they fix it, they pay for it. We cannot afford to have this project be held up because a contractor gets into it, and they run into some difficult soil conditions. And they, they hold up the job until we execute, execute a change order with it, we can't do that. With a guaranteed savings contract, you don't have to worry about that so much, because we have, we can put in remedies just as we can. And the traditional design bid build contract, that is, we can have liquidated damages and other, you know, time constraints and other clauses in there. So, you know, we, the, the sewer board has interviewed these three companies, the, the company that they agreed to work with is from Ohio. And they're a huge, they're, they're a big company, they do big jobs. And when you have a job of this magnitude, you don't want someone that has to stretch to get it done. You, you would prefer to have someone for whom this is business as usual, who's used to doing big projects in difficult circumstances. A 25-foot-deep project through the middle of the city in poor soil conditions and, and a high water table is a difficult job. It is just a difficult job. And, you know, we recently wrapped up some litigation with a, with a, a contractor. And the fight was over soil conditions, they got into, it was, it was also a job, it was just a 36-inch pipe, it wasn't that big of a deal, but it was 20, 24-foot deep. And the soil conditions weren't good, that litigation went on for eight years. And, you know, even though they were the low bidder, by the time we got to the end of it, we paid more for them than we would have if we'd have hired somebody else. And that's the type of situation you get into, they, they brought a lawyer onto the job halfway through it, preparing for litigation, knowing before they got done that they, there was going to be a lawsuit. We don't want that. If you want to know what this job's going to cost you, this is the way we can go. If you want to not have to worry about what they find in the ground, this is what you want to do. If you want to guarantee that the- If you wanna guarantee that the job's gonna be done on time with no ifs, ands, or buts, this is a good way to go. There are three other procurement methods uh, that are probably not appropriate for this uh, type of job, so I won't talk about those. But you know, I, I don't wanna get too far out into the weeds. I'd be happy to respond to any questions about, about this process or about the advantages and disadvantages if you have them.
Can I offer a, a comment to, to kind of book in Mr. Gillenwater's discussion? If it, if it pleased the board? Thank you. So being old, which I am, and Gillenwater is old.
Older than you.
Yes, we, he and I recall and, and some of you will remember the uh, last jail construction project. I happened to be the attorney for the Jail Holding Corporation. And we entered into this type of a contract for that construction, for that piece of, of new jail because of what Mr. Gillenwater's stating regarding and the conditions and the unknown nature of downtown Jeffersonville. And there we weren't going twenty-five, how far, Mr. Gillenwater, that you're all going with your?
About eight thousand feet.
We were going out into the street and we entered into the, 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 I call it a cap contract. The cap contract was a cap date for completion and, and the contractor took all the risk. And they got down into the dig and they couldn't get their hole to stay dry. So they had to build a coffin around all of the places where the pillars were going to go in for the construction. So you know, that was a, a great deal for the Holding Corporation and it was based on that same premise because of the uncertainty of the downtown soil in the downtown area. And, and as a history geek, I will also tell you a lot of that comes from back uh, in the Civil War era. There was actually an effort to build a canal from the Ohio River up through town to the Quartermaster Depot. So there's just nobody that really knows what in the world is in the ground and what has been excavated. So I would just offer that as a thought about why, now I under, by the way, I now understand why you all are doing that. I didn't realize the magnitude of the dig and didn't realize the magnitude of, of the, the risk. But I just wanna offer that as something for the council to know and understand. That is a contract procedure I've been involved in in my career and the reasons were just what Mr. Gillenwater described. It's a, it's a method of capping your risk.
This is not a type of uh, method that, that the sewer board had used before. And it's not something that they frankly would uh, plan on doing a lot with their smaller projects or things that we are very familiar with, building lift stations, putting in a, a six-inch pipe or something. We can do that. Uh, that's easy. But this is a project uh, that is huger in scope than anything that the city's actually done before. It costs more than the sewer plants. Uh, and unlike the sewer plants that were built on one piece of property, this is gonna run up and, you know, almost two miles up and down the streets. And uh, it, there, there's some problems involved in that, you know? Not just traffic, but I mean, what you're gonna find underneath. Uh, Larry's right about the canal and uh, I don't know why it didn't work. Maybe the ground wasn't sturdy enough or something. But anybody who's lived here long uh, remembers uh, Athen mechanic and how uh, the city struggled for years and years and years to, to get that to not sink and it's still sinking a little bit. Okay? We have bad dirt here. We have bad dirt and, and that's part of the risk. If you have any questions, happy to try and respond to them.
I had one if, if I can have a floor, Matt.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Gillenwater, thanks for uh, explaining the, the job and I, I wasn't aware of how big a magnitude it was. Um, I would ask that, was all three members present for the only three companies that was selected? Um, I would assume they were for a job this magnitude and there only being three members in three companies.
Well, Mr. Orem had to leave before the uh, one of the contractors made their presentation, but he met with them later privately. Uh, with some representatives of that company. So they did have their chance at him before they voted on this. So yes, they all had their opportunity to address the board now. Did that uh, did that meeting with Mr. Orem happen in the same room as the others? No, but actually they, they had him one-on-one. So it, uh, that might have been an advantage, might have been a disadvantage. I don't know. But they all did have an opportunity to address all three members of the board.
To follow up to Mr. Maple's question, when that, when they were in that meeting and the selection was made, what kind of grading process or criteria is used? Is there a grading scale or uh, to choose the contractor?
Yes, there is. Uh, there's a six-page uh, request for, for qualifications. And in that uh, six pages, I, I'd be glad to send a copy to each of you. Um, here's how the score, how it was scored. Uh, on background and qualifications, it's ten percent. On references and project experiences, forty percent. Uh, project implementation, twenty percent. Financial approach, fifteen percent. And guaranteed management, uh, guaranteed management was fifty, fifteen percent. So you know, the, there was a scoring method. It wasn't just arbitrary. Again, I can send a copy of the uh, the six-page request to you. Uh, and you know, it was, it was pretty thorough. The engineers have been uh, very helpful in helping us put that together because they speak the same language and they're more familiar with these things than the board is. Because uh, as I said, this is the first time that the board has considered using this because of the magnitude of this particular project.
Mr. Gillenwater, would that, um, those percentages that were used, is that a state guideline or is that a guideline that was uh, conjured by the board?
I don't know that there is a state guideline. Uh, I think this probably came uh, from the recommendation of our engineers.
I spoke to the engineers last week briefly. Uh, I'm, uh, more closely, I spoke to Jorge. I, I asked him um, if there was such a process and, and he was not sure and was gonna get back with me, and I'll ask you the same question because I haven't heard from him. About a not to exceed RFP so that we could have competitive pricing from multiple companies and then review those. He did not see why you couldn't do that and he was gonna investigate that.
There, there is a, there are five procurement methods that we can use that are all authorized by law and they're all, they're all uh, competitive. One is design bid build that you're familiar with. Another is a public-private agreement. Um, and that, that's not something that would be appropriate for, for this and I don't think it's what you're talking about. Now, what you're talking about could be um, included in what's called the design-build approach. In design-build, um, you get qualifications and proposals and, and, and ask for bids on price. Part of the problem with design-build is that um, there are, not many people use this. I'm, I'm not familiar with anybody locally that's used it. And I understand that up north, a couple of people have, but there are a lot of reporting requirements and public meetings and stuff. And we don't mind, uh, don't mind, you know, the, the transparency. That's not the problem. But it's just kind of cumbersome and for, for the most part, people have not chosen to use it. The other method that I haven't spoken of is the construction manager, is constructor, and that's really not what you're talking about either. Um, basically in that, what that entails is the, the city or the sewer board hiring somebody to manage the construction. Managing construction is not a problem for us. That's something that we're used to. That would be a process that might be more appropriate for maybe a library board or a parks department who's not in the business of building things. But the sewer board, you know, in the city, we do public works projects all the time. As far as a request for proposals, uh, not to exceed, um, you know, we can negotiate the price on this. You know, we can make sure that the price doesn't exceed a certain amount. Uh, the, the real uh, difference in this process and the design bid build uh, as far as the price is, it, you know, we can look beyond just the bottom dollar. If I'm getting an open-heart surgery, I'm not looking for the guy that's bidding the lowest, okay? Uh, you know, and our culture, sometimes we think cheaper is better. But I would gamble by saying we've all lived to regret a choice we made that, uh, where we took the cheapest price. Uh, the lowest price at first is not always the lowest price at the end. You know, that, this is a complicated project. And uh, it, it deserves a, a more thorough approach to it. I think that's why the board has chosen this approach, because it reduces the city's risk. It, it guarantees that we will not exceed uh, a certain price. And there won't be any surprises. You know, there shouldn't be any surprises that we're responsible for. Like Mr. Wilder said, uh, I remember when they were doing that project and I remember the, the problems that they had. And that project got way behind because it was the groundwater and, and Jeffersonville has a high water table. Uh, and, and you know, I'm not an engineer, I don't play well on TV, but I've been involved in enough public works projects to tell you, the soil conditions and groundwater are two complicated things and they delay projects. And if you wanna take the risk out of that, you've got to and that, you have to take some unusual approaches. And but, but back to your question, Mr. Burns, I am not familiar with, that any of these five uh, procurement methods that are authorized by Indiana State statute fall into the category of what you're talking about.
You know, you, um, just to follow up, you mentioned the design build and I've been through the design build on a public project before. Um, not quite the same as a school, but I don't know why that wouldn't be an excellent way to put the project out to bid. Because you actually put a ceiling on the price and, and the project I was involved in, uh, some of the contractors came below. And we even had one contractor bid above the price, so they automatically got thrown out. We had contractors come in below the, the maximum price uh, that was set. And it's a very, very good way to make sure that we're getting a competitive price because our, the engineers are setting the price range for this project. We're just finding a contractor that can work within that price range. We're not even a hundred percent guaranteed that the price range that the engineer set is high, low, or, or on the, on the mark.
You, you're correct.
They miss their marks all the time. I can take you up to Chapel Lake Park, they miss the mark, you know?
Uh, sometimes they do, you know, sometimes they guess low, sometimes they guess high. And they will admit that depending on market conditions and supply and demand, uh, that, that they can miss the mark. Uh, but sometimes we do the best we can. Now, part of the problem with this project is that our design is over ninety percent completed because in order to get this consent decree uh, modified, uh, that we had to submit uh, an explanation of how this job was going to be done to the EPA and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. So we are pretty much locked into a design. You'll be happy to know that uh, because we, we've been negotiating with the EPA for about four years on this, but we've saved tens of millions of dollars by altering the design that was originally agreed to uh, several years ago. Uh, not only do we have to spend less money, but it's gonna result in cleaner water. Part of that's because of improved technology, but part of it's just because when they were making decisions back at the beginning, I don't think they had a, a good information to, to start with. Because the city uh, wasn't getting good information from a contractor that uh, was running the plant. But you know, it, back to your concern, uh, most of the design work's already done. So design-build may not work in this case because we're tied into what we have promised the EPA we will be doing.
So I believe that would take more investigation, but I don't know why the design-build process couldn't be still used, even though we have the plans. On the project I'm thinking about, we put out the criteria and said, we gotta, you know, have X amount of rooms. We gotta have X amount of uh, facilities within the facility, restroom facilities and stuff. They had to figure out the configuration of the shape and the types of materials that they're gonna use.
In order to get this consent decree approved, we had to tell them what type of pipes we were putting in the ground. That's already been determined.
But if we went to design-build, it would get us a maximum price not to exceed and go out for competitive bid?
It could. It, it possibly could, but you know, another consideration. Well, it, you know, uh, you, you're right. It could. And you know, one of the things that we do rely on our engineers for, they missed, they missed the marks on time. If I wanted to buy a boat, I would probably talk to Mr. Webb and he could tell me what it was worth. He might be a little higher, a little low, but he would get me in the ballpark. Our engineers do this for a living. They do it every day. And uh, they have a, a finger on the pulse when market conditions change or you know, a contractor's not busy, they can come in lower. If they're all busy, then they come in high and we don't know that. But they know about what it takes to put this stuff in the ground. In this case, they don't know what it takes to put it in the ground exactly because we're dealing with such difficult conditions. But I, you know, it is possible that uh, you know, we, they could have considered a, a design build. But again, the, the design is already established at this point.
Mr. Gillenwater, I, I understand what you're saying, but you, you've already stated that we had three people that were qualified to do this job. I don't understand why we wouldn't put it out the bid if we had three qualified people that the board established were qualified to do this build. Why we wouldn't put it out the bid and see what each of their bids came in as? If we have established that they were qualified to do the job, I would like to have a quality job done, but for the best possible price. Easy to throw around, you know, numbers in the twenties, but you know, twenty-six and twenty-seven, that's a million more dollars.
That's true. Um, if you do a design bid build uh, approach, then you run the risk of having to deal with the change orders. So you don't have, you don't know what your maximum price is gonna be.
I was saying with the cost not, with the cost not to exceed onto that bid.
Well, you know, uh, you could do that until they said the conditions were different than you uh, than you quoted us or the, 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 any engineer uh, disclosed to us. And as I told you, the conditions here uh, are going to change from place to place, from season to season uh, because of the difficult uh, soil conditions, the water table and because we don't know what's under the pavement.
So they waive, they waive those um, conditions under the procurement that you've said with the, when you pick one contractor, but they can't waive those provisions under the bid process and the cost not to exceed?
On the design bid build, that's not typically part of the deal. Uh, they're gonna say that what you, what they had to do was different than what you spent on the job. And you will in, and inevitably get a change order and they will ask for more money. Maybe not, but I have never seen a public works project where they came in underbid. There is almost always, almost always a change order. Now, there are some contractors that are good. Uh, if they're building a lift station, you know, for a hundred thousand dollars and they, they might eat a little bit extra just not to put in a change order. There's a couple like that. There are some of them who will uh, look, you know, they, they get the, the bid and then they start looking for change orders. In fact, I understand there's a local contractor that has a boat called Change Order. Uh, that ought to tell you something.
Mr. Gillenwater, Mr. President could not speak. But appreciate you coming up, Mr. Gillenwater. Um, I think you've explained it quite well on how procedure works. It sounds like on how you go with this procedure, it's basically protects us from the change orders, correct?
Check protects you from the change orders and the unknowns, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it helps us on the scheduling too, because we can negotiate better on that.
On, when y'all took those three bids, you all, you all got three full bids, correct?
We did not get bids. We asked for.
We did not get bids. You only got one bid.
And we're, no, we didn't get bids. We're negotiating price.
But you only got one negotiated price?
That's correct.
All right. Cause I was gonna ask percentages of where those other ones came in at, but we never got those, correct?
That's correct. If, if price was the only consideration, then the way to go is to bid. Uh, but in this case, that's not the only consideration.
After y'all say like. After y'all say like, for example, I think um if you get this bid and y'all go with it, can the other two contractors come in? And and guarantee and and bid under that after you? I mean, say like if y'all go with the uh place in Ohio, can the other two contractors come in on that or are they just? Are they just out because of the six page? That y'all that wrote up?
We attempt to to get to negotiate with a firm and if we reach an agreement, we sign it. If we don't reach an agreement, we can talk to one of the other two and try to reach an agreement with them. Okay?
Okay.
You know, and is this uh, this is not like the lowest bidder gets to build it. No, that's not what this is about at all. This is the builder that's best or that the sewer board considers to be the most qualified uh gets to build it. And we can negotiate a price that the sewer board believes is a fair price. Is it possible that somebody could bid less? Yes, it's possible. But you know, if you want to use this process, you use this process. If you want to go with the uh design bid build, then you can do that, but you assume a lot of risks.
But I realize that. We don't know if we're ten percent or twenty percent over or under billing.
It's very, well, it's it's almost certain that it won't come in over and it's very possible that they will come in under because one of the things that they do is if they can figure a way to do it cheaper and better, uh, we may save money on uh time and materials. They still get the the fee for uh managing and and running the project.
So just for clar- clarification, one architect has decided what they think the appropriate price would be and they'll negotiate with one contractor to negotiate the appropriate price. We're relying on one, one architect and one uh private entity, both private entities to negotiate the best possible price with the three member sewer board for the city.
You've got the the engineering firm that is helping the city. You've got a a civil engineer on the sewer board who's uh, I don't know how old Bill is. I guess he's close to seventy. He's been in the business for a long time. And so you've got him and you've got other people. You've got the mayor and you've got Mr. Orem who are not novices in this area either. So it's not like you've got a bunch of neophytes. And yeah,
I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't implying that at all. I was saying we have very few people give an input onto a twenty plus million dollar project. I, in no way no way it was implying that someone wasn't qualified on those respective agencies to give that. It would be uh, that was definitely not my intent in my statement.
I didn't mean to put words in your mouth. I'm sorry about that. If I, if that's the way you took it. But my point is, no, you're you're correct. We've got a group of engineers from Jacobite teams of Lance that's giving us advice. And we've got Bill Saygesser, who's an engineer uh independent of them. And then you've got people with business experience and and it's and municipal experience that are participating in these negotiations. And I will say this about the the firm that they're uh negotiating. This is a a market that they would like to get into this area. Uh, they've worked around this area. They haven't worked in this area. Uh, and so it's it's always good when you've got somebody coming in who's trying to make a good impression. Uh, you know, I'll tell you what I think's going on here and 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 you folks are completely within your rights and it's responsible for you to be asking these questions. You're asking really good questions. Uh, but you have to trust somebody to make these decisions and and you guys have appointed to the sewer board. Uh, the legislature's enacted these laws and and this is a procurement method that's that's authorized. It's competitive. Uh, but you've got somebody who maybe didn't didn't get the nod, who didn't get what they wanted from one parent. Now they've come to the other person and they're asking them to second guess the first parent.
I would, I would question whether you said that this is a competitive process in that statement, that it's not.
Well,
It's a sele- it's a selective process. It's not a competitive process at all.
Well, depends on how you define that and I don't want to parse words, but instead of just considering price, which is the only thing that you consider in the other other uh method, you consider qualifications, you consider their work history, you consider what they've done in the past, you know, their ability to do this. And that's a big thing because you don't want just anybody doing the job like this. This is a big job. It's it's a hard job and uh you know, if if I was having somebody cut my grass, I'd take the lowest bid, but if I was having somebody do heart surgery on me, I'd check them out. And that's what the city's done here. The sewer board's done. They and and I'm not casting stones at the at the other two, but you can only pick one. And you can negotiate. Uh, that's the way we live our lives uh normally day to day, whether we're buying a car or a, you know, a house or or negotiating a repair, but um, the the legislature says that this is okay. It's just not lowest bid. It's just not the lowest bid.
I think the the point, the point being is that it may be okay and it may be a legal process for procurement, but it's not something that we're comfortable with when we talk about spending twenty plus million dollars on a single project, which is something that we haven't had to do in the city of Jeff for as long as I can, you know, look back. This is going to be a major infrastructure improvement. Uh, that's been fifteen to twenty years in the making. That's been thirty-five years overdue. And when we talk about not going with the cheapest route, the we we can all understand that. But what what I don't think we're getting to the root of is can we not bring in the engineer or the the building firms that we feel that the sewer board feels are qualified? Understand that these are the people who are qualified to bid the project and then put those select builders out for a competitive bid not to exceed, just like you're doing instead of, instead of, you know, agreeing on the price, put it out to bid and understand that these are the three or four or seven firms that are qualified to bid on it. But you know, they're going to have to, you know, bid competitively. It's the lack of competition. It's the, we've we've taken out any sort of of uh ability to guarantee the rate payer for the city of Jeff that they're getting the best price for this project. And when we're talking about a twenty-six million dollar project, three percent is a whole lot of money. Um, and and the sewer board may take a lot of flack for not waiving fees, but the city council and the city in general takes a lot of flack for the amount of increase that a rate payer has seen over the last eight years. And I think that's what we're all concerned about. When we see rates continuing to go up and up and up and they're the highest they've ever been, the highest in the region. And then we put out a no bid contract for twenty-six million dollars. That gets our attention and it may be legal, but it sounds like we're not in favor of it.
I understand your concerns uh and to some people it may look inappropriate if you want the sewer board to get three or four more engineering firms to to review the price proposals. I think that'd be a great idea. But we do need to move on with this because we've got a deadline to meet. And uh, this is a two-year project, so we need to get started hopefully in the next two or three months. But I understand your concerns in the appearance.
I mean, that deadline has been looming with the same, with, you know, everybody understanding that that deadline was coming for the last fifteen years. So I mean, to say we're short on time now, we have to make a a quick decision. I don't think is uh is going to make the the cut for a twenty-six million dollar project.
It's, first of all, it's uh only in the last uh couple of months that we've got the EPA to agree to let us spend less money and do this project a different way. And we've been negotiating with them for uh for four years on this and we finally uh just gotten through our public comment period at the end of July. And we're waiting on the uh, you know, we've got a a consent decree, an amendment that's been sent to a federal court. Uh, we didn't get any negative responses, so I expect that that consent decree will be approved that that allows us to use this new design. We already started doing the design work uh because we had to do that in order to get the amendment to the consent decree. It it, I understand that it does not appear to be a competitive process to some people, but it truly is. And you know, you know, the the, you can talk to the sewer board about this. I'm sure they'd be happy to to fill you in, give you more details. Uh, if 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 the main focus of your concern is that we need to take the lowest bid, um then I don't know that that's going to be possible and still have the assurances that we need to not run huge risks. Uh, when you buy an insurance policy, uh, you pay for that and that's what we're doing here. Uh, we're buying an insurance policy that ensures that we will not pay a penny more than we expect to. Uh, if you go the other direction, you got no guarantees. You're in the basement. Here you're, you've got a ceiling price and if it's a reasonable price, uh I understand that uh, that's a lot of money. It's a big project. A lot of materials go into it, a lot of risk. But you know, it it it, the project needs to move on and if if the council feels strongly that we need to take the lowest bid and do the the traditional design bid build process, you can do that, but you can ask them to do that. But uh, I think you'd be making a mistake.
Mr. Gil, Mr. Gillwater, you mentioned that the EPA finally allowed us to take a lower bid. What were the previous, what were they estimating years past? Did I get that wrong?
The the project that the the they were that the city had committed to do was approximately twelve years ago. And um, they were under the gun and I'm not second guessing the people who made the decisions then. But uh, there were some estimates on what that was going to cost, but we didn't. We weren't far enough along in the in the design process to really get some firm things. This but it involved putting in bigger pipes that were going to do less good. And we found another, our engineers found another way uh to spend a small amount of money to do a lot better job treating the pollution. And that allowed us to cut out a bunch of other expenses. Uh, we, and and I don't remember the 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 exact numbers. You have to ask the engineers, but it was tens of millions of dollars uh that that we're spending less. You know, the board works hard to and and the mayor's on the board, so you'd have got to know this is true. He doesn't want to raise sewer rates. Nobody does. And we've been able to so far move along in this project without having to do that, thanks to the to the sewer board and the council that work together and the engineers. Uh, but this is, this is a situation that is going to rub rub against some people because it's not traditional design bid build, take the lowest bid and go on. Uh, but with the risks involved, uh, it makes a lot of sense to the board and to our engineers. And to me, for what that's worth, that this is a a, it's a risk worth taking or eliminating actually. Because if you, if you do this, then you know you're going to have a product. If there's a company that's been selected that is uh, this is not a huge job for them because they do jobs bigger than this. And they've proven that they can do this. And and and, you know, they've delivered in the past and their track record is part of the consideration. Uh, so, but the the ultimately the sewer board has to make that decision, but they need to do something pretty quickly.
Mr. Rowan, I have one more question, if that's okay. My same question I ask uh, Mr. Lance from JTL, I would ask you as well, Mr. Gillwater and and hope to get an answer to it is why can't we do a not to seed RFP? And why can't we do a design build process? Because the design build process I have been involved in before had a not to exceed as well. And it's my understanding that that the contractor had zero change orders unless the change orders on this project I was involved in uh was made by the owner.
I, I'm familiar with the design build process and I think it's a good approach. If the the contractor had some flexibility, it would, it would be uh something that could be considered here, but in this case we don't have very much flexibility on what we're going to build. We can't say we need a a school building for five hundred kids and let them design it. This is a very specific job uh that we've got to do and the way we've got to do it is is been approved by the EPA and IDIM and and we need to stick to the proposal that we've already made. We can't have them be creative and come up with another way without going through this consent decree thing again, and that took four years the last time. We just can't do that.
I I'm not asking to change the plan. Let's keep our plans. And my question is, is why can't we do a not to exceed RFP? Or a design build, that process would work using our plans?
We can put the thing out for bid with a not to exceed price, as long as they don't find anything in the job that's not uh consistent with the the plans, then they won't ask for more money. Uh, and and maybe, you know, if you ask them to take this risk though, the it's it's going to be expensive because
That's exactly what the the company you're negotiating with is doing today. They're
That's, that's correct.
So why not put it out for competitive bid and let's factor the risk and see if we can get a good bid with a price not to exceed. And we're controlling the um uh language in the in the in the RFP. We have our engineers write in the proposal that it's not to exceed and and spell out that criteria so that we don't get the change orders.
If we, if we put out for RFP, do we have to accept? Or can we go back to this original plan of which you have explained this evening?
Would you repeat that question?
Sure. Um, apologies.
No, no, it was me, not you.
If if we um put this out for an RFP the way Mr. Councilman Burns is explaining, would we have to accept that or could we deem all of them unacceptable and go back to this original company of which the negotiation is currently taking place with?
You could put it out for bid and you could reject all the bids that they came in.
Okay.
But if we put it out for RFP, then we can take it, we could um take those under advisement and then negotiate with one of the companies as well, I believe.
I'm not sure what you mean by an RFP because
That's for proposal.
I I know what what the words stand for, but but the design is completed. And a typical RFP, you let them be creative with the design. Uh, you tell them what you want, they come up with a way to build it.
That's a design build. I took RFPs in the Parks Department. We did them multiple times.
Okay. You get requests for proposals and how much are those projects worth?
Say that again?
How much do those projects cost?
Um,
Because procurement, uh, you know, there are dollar amounts that we we had a lot of discretion.
Um, close to a million dollars. I mean, they're not, they're not twenty-three million.
So, Mr. Burns, I think what I'm hearing you say is that your belief is that there's a plan that has been approved and you propose that that plan be set out as basically a request for proposal for cut price.
Correct.
So I I think, Mr. Gillwater, what Mr. Burns is saying is granted, we we have a, we are married to a design that the federal government has said we must be married to. I think Mr. Burns' question is why, why lit that design out to propose bidders to propose a price? Am I, am I misstating?
With the, with the cost not to exceed. With the cost not to exceed. It's it's only beneficial of us to do that.
Is that an accurate statement, gentlemen, of what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
It's possible to make the bid specifications uh ask them to present a bid that that includes everything and and I I I'm not familiar with many, any contracts that have been bid that way, but uh there's nothing that would prevent a bid from, you know, a a request for bids to go out. That'll probably delay things two or three months. You know, we have to put the bid specs together, advertise it and receive the bids and then hope they come in at a at a, at a price that we can afford.
We should already have the specs, just have to modify some of the language in there.
Well, that's true. It has to be written. Well, that's true. It has to be written, uh, and has to be advertised and put out, and, um, is that possible? I guess that is.
Well, if it saves millions of dollars, I don't know why we wouldn't explore that avenue.
Well, it could cost you millions of dollars. It might save you millions of dollars.
We keep glossing over the cost not to exceed. What me and Bill are saying is saying, why wouldn't we put it out with a cost not to exceed?
Well, you can, what I think, what I think
Maybe, maybe there's a reason we can't, but you haven't, you haven't given us a clear answer on that. Maybe there's a reason we can't say there's a cost not to exceed X amount of dollars built into a RFP, but you have not given us a clear answer on why we cannot do that.
You can put, ask for a bid, the, and specify that if you take the job, that you have to complete it for the bid price. Uh, and provided that the design is, is exactly what you need, and they don't, and, and you can put in there some risk factors, I guess. And then you can, then you take the lowest bidder, right?
Yes, with a cost not to exceed. I mean, you've already said, you've already said we have three quality people that could do this. I just, no, no one has answered why we can't put a cost not to exceed in a RFP, saying, give us your final and best number, and you assume all liability and risk and bid it out to everyone. Nobody's answered that question. And if you say that people have never did that and haven't explored that avenue, I don't know where they've been in negotiating, you know, for, for years.
Mr. Gillwater, are they worried about the financial backbones of the contractors?
That's part of it. They, they're concerned about their ability to complete the job and to do it on time and to stand behind what they say they will do.
But as Bill says, we could reject all, all bids if we don't see them, deem them fit. And, and I still haven't got the answer of, can we send it out with a cost not to exceed? And they assume all liability on it.
We can request a bid for whatever we want and see if people will bid on it and what it would cost.
Well, then, as a councilman that's responsible for the, the finances of the council, of the city, that appoints the board members to the sewer board, I would request that we do that.
Mr. Gillwater, if we get a contractor comes in, gives us a little bid, what can we do to guarantee that they can complete the job financially wise? What, what kinda, how can we put them on the line?
We have to accept bids from each responsive and responsible bidder. And, and what that means is they have to prove that they're capable of doing the work, uh, to be responsible.
But what skin in the game do they have? I mean,
They, they, they give you, you get a bid bond. I mean, they have to give you a bond, guaranteeing that they will get the job done. Uh, we can have, uh, remedies, liquidated damages remedies in there, saying, if you don't get it done in this period of time, that you pay us so much per day, uh, as a penalty, uh, for the, for your failure to perform. And if the contract is written, uh, it depends on how the contract is written. It's typical contracts, uh, I mean, they are written in such a way that people have to perform work, and they have to get it done by a certain time, and that I am not aware of, I'm not familiar with any contracts that have provisions that require performance regardless of the conditions that they, uh, encounter. But I guess that's possible, you could put that in there.
But that could be a legal nightmare with this type of dollar amount?
It's not a nightmare. It's just, uh, it's not typical.
Years of delay?
Well, it could cause, it's gonna cause some delay, you know? Then, you know, I think the, the board will have to consider your, if the council votes, if the majority of the council votes for them to, to request that they do something different, then I'm sure that they will listen to you. They, they have the authority to do this. Uh, they, they want to cooperate with the council because we're all on the same beat. But, you know, this is a process that the state revolving loan fund is very comfortable with. Uh, this is a process that the engineers are comfortable with, and, and the, the state is comfortable with. The, the people, you know, I understand that the, that there are some concerns that you might not be getting the actual lowest bidder, but, you know, there are some, sometimes problems that come with that too. And I won't say anything in public meetings about any particular contractors, but sometimes you run into problems with people who hold you up, uh, knowing that, uh, it causes great problems for you. And you don't want people bidding on your jobs that will do that to you.
So, so if I can interject.
I'm gonna go ahead and interject. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and interject and ask if there are any council members who haven't asked a question. If you have any questions, um, because we've gone quite a while. And, uh, we can, we can continue the conversation if we need to, but I wanted to give the opportunity for the floor, for any of the council members who haven't spoken yet, if you have any questions.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rowan?
Mr. Gillwater, um, isn't it also possible to continue the process you're going on now, get the guaranteed price, then have people bid on it? And not take the lowest bid? Can't you justify that you took the second highest bid, or?
In this process that we're using, um, this is not a hybrid process, and we're authorized to negotiate. We can negotiate with any of these three people. You know, the council, excuse me, the, the sewer board has voted to negotiate with these folks for, for a number of reasons. They feel like they're the, the ones that, uh, what might be best to do this job.
You can negotiate with all three of them?
At this point in time, uh, I, I, I think I hear you saying, can we, can we throw it out for bid, uh, with the other two?
Can you negotiate it with all three of them at the same time?
It's possible to negotiate with all of them, but the, the process, I don't know how much traction we're gonna get with that if they all know we're negotiating with the other guys. I don't know if they're gonna put their best foot forward.
For twenty, for over
I don't know.
Okay, that's all I have.
So if I may, before you all move on, so in, in some parts, makes me think I'm hearing a way to maybe move this forward in a responsible manner, because it seems like, first, this is one of the most proactive governmental bodies I've ever represented, and, and one of the most interested in making sure they make the right decisions. It sounds to me like we might be at a place where less than five and more than one of the members of this council might be interested in taking an opportunity to sit down and meet and discuss in great detail how, what vision everyone has as going forward to try to get this project approved. And it seems like that might be prudent, because there's a lot of questions it sounds like my clients have, and maybe in the course of thirty-eight minutes, we haven't had an opportunity for their questions to be answered. And after that process occurs, then they can share with one another what they find out. That's just my thought.
I, I appreciate your advice. I believe there's a sewer board meeting Thursday. Um, I would ask if there's any other council members that have any questions that haven't spoke about this. If not, I would make a motion, um, to request that a RFP be sent out with a cost not to exceed on this project. And Larry, help me out if that's the, the legal way of making that motion.
I, I think it, your, the message in your motion is pretty clear to the board, the sewer board.
I, I, my, my questions were answered tonight, so I don't feel like I need to have any more discussion, and maybe some other council members do, but I would stand by my motion.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, uh, to send a recommendation or a request to the sewer board from the city council for them to, uh, request RFPs not to exceed, and not, and not to exceed for this project, uh, before moving forward. Motion's by Mr. Maples and the second was by Mr. Burns. Uh, was there anything else before we take a vote?
Quick question. So this is just us requesting to the sewer board to do these things, um, as the people that appoint two of them. They can choose to reject this, uh, ignore it, um, at their leisure. Is that correct, Larry?
Well, that's a great question. And to answer your great question, um, I believe that they can choose not to follow your lead, and they can vote the way they choose to vote, and then we can have a, a, a discussion about what your options are from that point going forward.
Ms. Gill? If you take a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Paris?
No.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Seven to two. Motion passive.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Gillwater.
Will somebody from the council be coming to the sewer board meeting? Would you like to be put on the agenda?
Can I recommend the one of my do that? If not, there's less than five. I think it might help.
I'm sure there'll be more than one.
Yes, we can accommodate that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillwater.
All right. Um, attorney comments, Mr. Wilder?
None. Thank you all for the exciting meeting tonight.
Uh, department head reports, uh, Ms. Metcalf, did you have anything further?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, uh, council comments then. Mr. White?
No comment.
Um, Mr. Burns?
No comment.
Mr. Paris?
No comment.
Mr. Maple?
Chief Kavanaugh sent me a message. He had a prior engagement he had a lead for. He wanted to stick around and thank you for, all the council members for voting for that position. Other than that, no comment.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
No comment.
Mr. Croft?
I have no comment.
Uh, Mr. Ellis?
Yes, uh, my comment is for everyone to really be safe. Have a blessed day, and don't forget to wear your mask. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Just real quickly, uh, on the lengthy discussion on the, about the sewer that we had, uh, that is, and I may, I voted to instruct them to do so. I intend ongoing Thursday night. I just thought that that is such an enormous project and such an enormous amount of money, uh, that the city's spending. The bid process, I think we need to really kind of really focus on. We need to be much more well-versed in that, and I feel like, I don't feel like anybody sprung it on us at the last second out of spite. I just think that's the way it worked. And so that's why I asked if it actually bound them to anything. Uh, the sewer board to do our will, because it, our will may not be correct in this time. I'm not totally convinced, but I think this at least buys us a tad bit of time when dealing with such an enormous amount of money, because I greatly respect the guys that he mentioned that are on that sewer board. If it wasn't for my respect for them, this would be dismissed out of hand for me. But I think that they really are doing, you know, they've tried to do the best they can, but now we are the financial arm, and we need to protect, uh, taxpayers' dollars, so we have a little bit different role than they do. So I just wanted to make that clear. I do intend ongoing Thursday, if anybody else is gonna go, unless I have something else that comes up. Uh, but this is a very, very big thing, and I, I could tell everybody was very involved in the conversation. And I think we need to continue to be, because you're talking about a twenty million dollar plus project, totally kind of destroying two streets in downtown for two years. I mean, this is a big deal. So that, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, um, our next meeting is the, the next first Monday of the month would be on a holiday, um, so I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that we will need to meet on Tuesday, the eighth, uh, September, Tuesday, the eighth, at seven o'clock. I will send out all the same Zoom information, and I'll be here at the mayor's conference room. Um, need to make sure, Mr. Wilder, that that's advertised correctly. I think we did that at the beginning of the year.
Yes, sir. If I can check again.
Okay, we'll just double check on that, make sure that's correct. Um, and if we need to advertise, we can advertise. Um, also, wanna just touch base and see if anybody has any thoughts on uh, the budget proposal that came from the administration. We met and discussed that briefly last week. Um, if we need to set a meeting to go through any discussions at length again, please, uh, reach out via email or shoot me a text, and we can schedule that between now and our next council meeting, uh, when we'll have that ready to, to be heard. Um, the only other thing, you know, I, I, back to the, the sewer discussion, I think, Mr. Webb, you asked about what the, the estimates were when we started this process. You know, in two thousand and eleven, this estimated, the estimate to come into compliance with the EPA was a sixty-five million dollar project. And then, you know, we rejected that pretty handily in two thousand and eleven, and it turned into a, a thirty-six million dollar project. Um, and then, you know, there were, there were some changes with the EPA, and we thought we could go back and renegotiate, and now we're talking about a twenty million dollar contract. So every time this council has pushed back on, uh, the cost of what it really would take to bring us into compliance, which is what we all want to do, um, we've seen positive results. And I don't think that it's too much for us to ask, um, for competitive pricing on a project and, and a transparent, you know, bid process. When we talk about, I, I think every council member here has committed that they are not going to support an increase uh, for our ratepayers, you know, through their sewer rates again. We're not going to do that. And if we're not, if we're gonna stand by that pledge, we've got to make sure that we're getting the best value um, for the ratepayers in Jeffersonville. And it's not about making sure we go with the lowest bid, because everybody agrees that the lowest bid is not always the right way to go. But there should be a way to compare apples to apples amongst multiple players to make sure we're getting the best price um, for what we're doing. And when we talk about a twenty million dollar project, I think I, I appreciate everybody being spot on and, and concerned and asking questions, uh, because I, I tend to agree with you. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
See you, guys.
Thanks. Thank you.